I now call the December tenth, two thousand and thirteen workstation of the Riverton City Council to order at seven P M. Would Councilmember Smith lead us in the plates, please?
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With the city clerk, please conduct the roll call.
Here.
Present.
Here. 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 Here.
I am present, thank you. I declare that we have a quorum this evening, approval of the agenda, the chair would entertain a motion for the approval of sites.
I would move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Been moved in second, it is your discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Agenda item number six, Old Riverton Landfill Remediation Program Discussion, city administrators' report, please.
Yes, Your Honor, I'm gonna turn it over to Dawn and she's gonna start us off.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Old Landfill, the Old Riverton Landfill, which is located where the ballfields are on Smith Road, just west east of that, it was closed in the early nineteen eighties. Wyoming Department of Environmental Quality requires that the city, the owner of the landfill, which is the city, monitor groundwater contamination for thirty years. Throughout the years, there have been different regulations that have come up now, and there has been contamination indicated in that landfill. This past legislation session, House Bill zero zero six five was passed. This act created a municipal solid waste landfill remediation program, and the Old Riverton Landfill is listed under that remediation program as one of the top landfills that is contaminated. We've asked Enberg Miller Engineers to come in and discuss that legislation, the background information, history of the City of Riverton landfill, and potentially what the current status is and where we can move forward. The legislation is requiring that the city contribute up to twenty-five percent of the cost of that. They are allowing that certain dates that the city can go back if we've expended any funds for this certain time period on remediation efforts or monitoring, that we can use part of those as a part of our twenty-five percent match. And Enberg Miller can discuss that as well. After ten years, this, once we start the remediation of this, it is a volunteer program at this point. After ten years, the City of Riverton takes back the continuing operation and maintenance of the landfill. It's not a, we get to give it up and be done with it. We're gonna still have to be involved in it financially as well as decision making and stuff. Enberg Miller, we've got three member, three of their staff here. We've got Steve Molt, who is the president. He was involved in the, attending all of the legislative hearings and stuff, and so he's kinda up to date on the House bill. Got Eric Graney, who is the hydrogeologist. He's the project manager of our current landfill monitoring. And so he understands kinda what's happening at our current landfill and the contamination. Then we have Howard Johnson, who's the C E O. And, and he, he was basically there when we closed the landfill. So, I'll turn it over to them.
Thank you. Members of council, appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Again, my name's Steve Molt, I'm president of Enberg Miller Engineers. And I guess at your request, we could, we can handle this. I'd like to speak about the legislation, but we also have with Howard and Eric here, we can also discuss the history of the site. So I guess your preference is how you'd like us to, how comfortable you are with what, what the history of the site is and when it was closed and what we're seeing out there, or I can just launch into the, where we're at today with this legislation and how it impacts this facility.
I think it would be interesting for me to know the history of, a little bit of the history of it and then go into the legislation.
Okay, well, that'd be fine. Why don't, Howard, do you want to mean?
Good evening, Mayor and council. This kinda feels like old home week being here tonight. Like Dawn said, I was involved way back in the beginning when they first formed the Solid Waste District in seventy-eight, seventy-nine, and then over a few years, time, three or four years, the district took over this landfill, started the new Sanddraw landfill, which enabled you to close this landfill out there and not use it any longer when Sanddraw was put into operation and permitted. So, I'll step back here a little bit, just for a minute. I have some old drawings that I originally developed back with George Oldkin originally. They had records and I think Paul was probably involved with it at the time also of record keeping. And, which one is which here? At the red?
The little knobs on the side.
Yep, I'm hitting.
The front one.
The other one. I lost it. That's, there's, that's under your finger there. The other one. I lost it. That's, there's, that's under your finger there. Just gotta keep my finger out of the way. Okay, this line right here represents the area in this pocket over here. The, the first thing we did, we knew there was a lot of trenches and stuff out there rather than try and just identify where each one of those were. We went out with a backhoe and we potholed the whole area to confirm where garbage was and how deep it was, how, from the surface on down, how much cover there was on it. And it was very minimal cover over the top of the garbage. So we identified this area as the area that had garbage underneath it that would ultimately need to have a cap put over the top of it when it was closed and reclaimed. So that was the first operation that we did. And as it turns out, the trenches were this direction and they went from this way over there. The trench right over on this side was in nineteen seventy-one, and the last trench, which actually lies underneath some of these ballfields and stuff, was in nineteen eighty-three. And that was the point of departure where we started to close the landfill. The way this was done, the way we do landfills today, it's what you call continuous mining. You just keep mining ahead of yourself, putting garbage in behind you and putting dirt on top of it, and you just mine across the site. This wasn't done that way. There was a crushing operation over here, and this was mostly all gravel. And so they went in with scrapers and dig dug a trench from north to south, took the gravel over here, it was crushed and it was gone, and they left about an equal width trench in soil. And then they did another one, and they kept leaving those. And as they started over, they were gonna go back and excavate in between them and fill those in. And we didn't get that far, we got a little bit of that done over here, but we didn't get all the way to the west side. So there's trenches filled there, and then there's areas that are wide enough that are just soil out there. But we had to cover the entire thing. At the time, we did the closure permit on it. The requirement was generally two feet of clay with a permeability of ten to the minus seventh material on it, and then six inches of topsoil over the top of it. They call that kind of a prescriptive cover. And that was the rules and regulations at that time. There was, there was some confusion in the rules about how, how much you had to put on, but at one point, that's what we used, was the two foot of clay and the six inches of topsoil. And most of that had to be imported because we didn't have any material left out there. So it was brought in. The Solid Waste District worked directly with the city. They provided equipment. They hauled dirt. The city, I think Paul had guys with trucks wherever we could scrounge up dirt at any construction project in town or anything else, we tried to get the best material we could in order to build that cap. And, and you've all been down there, I'm sure you know it's a fairly flat site. So we had to do kind of a herringbone, up-down, up-down kinda thing so we could direct water down and off all directions out there. So it was a, it was a fairly difficult job to control the grades. We got the entire site kinda shaped and graded. Then we brought in the clay, and we literally staked every lift of that clay because we needed to keep very close grade control on that. Until we got the two foot of clay in there, it was all density tested, met the density requirements, and then we put the topsoil on it and got it closed at that point. Since that time, as you well know, there's been lots of things happening on top of that site down there. Typically, when you close a landfill, you don't do anything on top of it until you can get through, like Dawn said, through that thirty-year post-closure period. Want the vegetation to grow because that helps. If moisture gets in, the plants take it and put it back up in the air. I mean, you kinda wanna protect that. But there's been a lot of activity over the top of the landfill. So I, I can't tell you what I think the, the condition of that ultimate cover is. Today, that is not the kinda cover that's allowed. You have to use man-made material or clay, and you have to put a frost protective layer over everything. And in this area, we would've had to put another forty-two inches of soil over the top of that cap down there if we were building this cap today. So that's, that's not what we have down there at this point. And Eric's gonna talk a little bit more about it. But we did get it all closed, we got the closure approved, we got it built. And since that time, it's, it's been operated and it's been monitored at this point in time. But there was a lot of people involved with it. Actually, I think County Road and Bridge helped too, didn't they? With trucks, along with, they hauled trucks, the Solid Waste District brought in their blades, rollers and stuff. It was, it was a real community effort, if you will, to get that cap built. But we really had a struggle finding the right kinda soil all over town to build that cap. So that's the way it's been since nineteen eighty-three, when we got the actual closure done, which coincidentally would've been thirty years today. Any other questions about that? That give you enough of a history on how it was run? Sure is shallow groundwater there, that's been the problem. I remembered seeing that when I first, I asked where the landfill was and somebody told me, "Well, no, that's the dump, it's down there." And things have changed considerably in that thirty years. But we did get a good closure on it. Okay, so if there's no questions, I guess we'll let Eric tell you about the groundwater issues and what's been going on with that.
Thank you, Howard.
Thanks, Howard. Mayor, council, I'm Eric Graney, I'm the, I'm senior vice president with Enberg Miller. I've been working on the Old Riverton Landfill for, boy, probably pushing twenty years now. The, the blue lines represent the direction of groundwater flow. Basically from west to east. The wind river courses right down here. We've got some monitoring wells basically surrounding the facility. Most of them are focused down here because that's downgrading from the landfill, trying to see what's in this direction. The, the small points, can't see them very well, those are a series of methane monitoring points that were installed back in the nineties. There was, we were seeing methane on the side of the landfill, and because we had structures over here, over here, we wanted to make sure we weren't going to, we knew where the methane was going and, and protect the structures in the safety. Anyways, the, the green lines here represent equal, they're called iso, isoplas, iso concentrations of vinyl chloride. Vinyl chloride at the site seems to be one of the primary regulatory drivers. They're, because, because it's exceeding compliance limits downgrading in the landfill. It's carcinogen. But what you can see here is one part per billion line right here, and five part per billion. And the highest concentration is right here, immediately downgrading in the landfill. But you notice beyond down in here, we don't, we're not seeing, we're seeing a little bit of vinyl chloride here, but for the most part, we've got, at this well, we've got the extent defined, so we know where it's at. The, the regulatory limit is two parts per billion, so it's, it's, that's what, two pennies in a Olympic-sized swimming pool. And it's really crazy small of contamination.
Eric?
Yes?
Can you speak up just a little bit? We have audience that's watching on T V and we've received complaints that some of our speakers, we just don't hear them very well. You speak very softly, so if you could.
Sure.
We'd sure appreciate it, thank you.
So anyway, that's the vinyl chloride concentration. Groundwater is about five feet below the surface, so we probably have garbage in groundwater. Bedrock is sandstone, is about ten feet. So we've got probably five foot of highly permeable gravel, cobble-type material. And then, then the bedrock. Any, any questions for me? Vinyl chloride, yeah, it's a, it's a man-made organic parameter. There are some other, other things that we've been looking at and, and some other, some other parameters, but the vinyl chloride is, is the primary contaminant of concern at this facility.
I see.
Yeah, it, yeah, it does, yep.
Is, is the methane gas that you talked about, is that something that could be used? I mean, is there enough of it to?
I doubt it.
Okay, I, I know there was some discussion at one time that that would be a possibility and I'd never, nothing ever happened of it, and I just was curious.
You know, generally in arid climates, recovering methane, the, the landfills don't generate, generate enough gas to, to make it economically feasible to try to capture it.
And then how about the, the storm drain that runs down there?
Over here?
Yes. Is that contributing to the groundwater problem, or?
Actually, it's a, it's a good boundary condition because that flows water most of the year. It, it's actually preventing contaminants from, you know, losing off to the, off to the north. You know, it's, it's a, and we call it a boundary condition. We don't see anything to speak of in this monitoring well right here. It's actually helpful.
Thank you.
That's a little bit of history and where we're at. I guess I might just throw it back a moment. The methane monitoring that's being done through those monitoring ports is handled by city staff, that's correct.
Correct, yeah, the wastewater treatment plant.
And have we, since those, and actually there was a methane collection trench that was placed along the, the west boundary as well, once, I guess, gas was detected in the concession stand. So I don't know if you wanna comment on that as far as additional history, but you're monitoring it and you're not indicating any increased methane?
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's a concern. There's not enough methane to, to collect and reuse, but there's enough to become problematic if it collects in, in areas. So we've been in this mode of just monitoring the facility without any really regulatory direction. I mean, when you go into closure, you basically monitor it with the idea towards getting it stable, getting groundwater conditions to stabilize or improve when you cap a facility. And then after that thirty years, kinda the, the timeframe over which that typically could happen, and then you petition to have this facility closed, you can just continue monitoring and those things. Well, obviously, we've got continued groundwater contamination, and, and there's many facilities, several facilities in the state that are kinda in this situation with, with old landfills that are, that are impacting groundwater. About three years ago, there was a citizens advisory group that, that along with Wyoming Solid Waste Recycling Association, started meeting on a regular basis and with the D Q to develop some assistance in landfill owners and operators throughout the state. Several pieces of legislation have occurred in the past several years. You perhaps have heard of some of them that would've been, you know, may perhaps impacted Fremont County in general and other counties, but basically, the, the trend in the state is to reduce the number of landfill, active landfills in the state. Towards that end, there was a, in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, there was legislation and funding made available to allow communities to plan in a regional basis to, to encourage discussions of regionalizing waste, collecting it, transferring it to, to facilities that could be adequately engineered to contain the waste in a, in a more environmentally sound manner. So that, that occurred in oh nine. Subsequent to that, a lot of facilities would like to close and transfer, but a lot of facilities don't have the adequate funds to close adequately. The, the closure that Howard was talking about is fairly intensive. So most facilities don't have those kinds of funds set aside to do that. And of course, that doesn't apply to you, but because you've got a facility closed, but it's still considered a leaking landfill. So about two, three years ago, there, there was additional discussion of this, this problem that these leaking landfills are, could, could cause the state. And the estimates were wide range of potential remediation costs to clean up these landfills. And recognizing that no communities or districts in the state really had the wherewithal to provide, to have the funds to clean up facilities on their own, generally with groundwater contamination, the state has stepped in and provided a mechanism, several funding sources, but one in particular that we're gonna talk about is, is tied to this bill that Dawn mentioned. And that's, it was House Bill sixty-five, it's now enrolled Act number forty-three, last year's legislative session. What it does is create a remediation program that, that the state will essentially take over cost responsibility for the most part on closing landfills. So it's giving communities a mechanism by which landfills can be closed, and, and the focus of this particular bill was leaking landfills. So, so landfills in the state that, that are, have shown impacting groundwater. About the same time, the state implemented, actually a couple of years prior to that, the state implemented a groundwater monitoring program that allowed a lot of facilities to put in more monitoring wells. And this, this was the start of this whole process to see how big the problem was. As a result of that, the, the states developed a list of, of, of what they consider leaking landfills and it kinda rated them by a criteria that they developed. So they've got this information that we provided them, as well as other facilities. And there's eleven considered high-impacted facilities, and your Riverton Landfill is number ten on that list of eleven. They've taken that eleven and taken it to the next step and said, "Okay, what's the cost of remediating these sites?" So the department has created a report and it's public information that, that, they look at each site internally without any input from consultants or owners, but basically did this for the legislator, or legislatures, to come up with a dollar amount that this is gonna be. To date, there's, I believe, forty-five million has been allocated to this fund or to this program. And the idea being that as these remediation, as remediation takes place on these facilities, the state will pay for seven, up to seventy-five percent of the cost for this, for remediation to occur. That leaves at least twenty-five percent responsibility of the facility owner. And, let's see. And where the, where the, where the legislation is now, the, the act's been enrolled. There's some rules, there's a rulemaking process that's triggered by that act. And, and the Department of Environmental Quality is, is over the last six, eight months, developed the rules to apply this program. There was a meeting before the Water Waste Advisory Board, which is the, the board below the Environmental Quality Council that basically is the rulemaking approval authority. They, they met last week with these draft rules. So I've got, I can comment on draft rules, I think there are some changes coming to them, but essentially, it's, it's intact and they'll probably be approved early next year for implementation sometime in the, the second half of twenty fourteen. At that time, then, there's, there's this pool of money that would be available to start this process of cleaning up these landfills. There's a, the, there's two things that could happen. There, there, well, basically, the, the process would be to participate in the program, an applicant needs to submit a notice of intent to participate in the program. That will trigger a review by the department and then a series of meetings to discuss, "Okay, what do you think the remedial action will be? And what, what investigations have to occur to come up with that plan?" I can back up a little bit. And the state, the D Q, for the purpose of their report to the legislature, came up with their thought, as, as Eric has described, the, the groundwater and soil conditions out there and what, what impact we've seen. The state has, has, has thinks that in this case, maybe a pump-and-treat or some kind of method of removing the groundwater that's, that's migrating east out of the landfill and basically taking it off to, to a treatment plant, that kinda thing. That's, that's, that's typically done, certainly in groundwater-impacted facilities like underground storage tanks, problems, things like that. It's a, it's a typical mechanism. It's not done often in landfills, but it's, it's a, it's a mechanism that they thought might apply in this case. There's probably several other things that need to be looked at before that's the approved remedial plan. But for the purposes of their report, they came up with that with a price tag of about one point five million to implement the, the, that system and to operate it for twenty years. So continued operation, maintenance, those kinds of things. So, so you're looking at, that's their estimate. And then there was a high estimate of him putting in like a barrier wall between the river and the facility, and that was something on the order of a little over two million dollars. So those are their rough cost estimates of what the magnitude of the remediation could be in this case. Dawn mentioned this, there's a, there's a, there's a judicial clause in the, in the bill or in the rules, and I believe it's still intact, that several facilities, including yourself, have, have that several facilities, including yourself, have expended funds over the past several years doing either installing wells, doing remedial activities on your own, basically. So you're kind of fall into that category. So I'm pretty confident that you'll be eligible for some consideration of those prior costs. The way the bill is written, there's been 4 million of the original money set aside to be basically, to recoup or to reimburse facilities for work that they've done since July 1 of 2006 up to December 31 of 2012. Activities that would be allowed would be any kind of drilling of monitoring wells and any additional extent of contamination, expiration, the monitoring of those wells. So I've taken a quick look at of what we've done out there in the last several years. And that, the number of, the cost of the remediation or the monitoring comes up to about 200,000, something like that since in that time period. That might be eligible for reimbursement. The reimbursement wouldn't be a cash reimbursement to the city, but it would be basically a recognition of, you could use that as credit towards the 25% that you'll need to put forward going forward now with any kind of additional investigation or remediation. So I mentioned that, that I think, and I've not talked to DQ directly about that, but that was the intent of that. And looking at, you know, what we've done since that time period, I think that would be worth exploring. And possibly sooner than later. I, the funding for that is $4 million and that's it. So the legislators were reluctant to open that up too large, not knowing, you know, how much activity. But I can tell you that Campbell County, Neptuna County, there are a couple of facilities that have been doing a lot of work and will be applying for those funds. So I'm guessing when that 4 million is gone, it's gone. So sooner than later might be the tact on at least initiating the process to participate in the program for that reason. I think I really hit the points that I wanted to, at least I was prepared to. So I guess, any questions? I know that's a lot of information and really it's still kind of up in the air. The rules are still being kind of developed as we speak. You know, where that ends, I'm pretty confident that what I've heard, at least I had a report from somebody that was at the meeting last week. And there may be some changes in what's submitted as far as an initial estimate of remedial costs and things. But that's essentially how it's being tailored at this point. Is there any questions, Mr. Mols?
Your Honor.
Yes, Councilman Fabian.
So looking at this remediation effort, if we decided to go forward with it, what kind of a timeframe would we be looking at for ongoing monitoring? Is that still, is that an additional 30 years from when we finish this cleanup or how does that work?
The, it could be as long as 30 years, could be shorter. I mean, depending on our remedial method and the, I guess, how it works, basically, the effectiveness of whatever remedial system is placed in it, whether it's some kind of a treatment system or some containment system. You know, if it's demonstrated that, you know, the site is cleaned up to standards, then you could actually petition to close and you'd walk away from it. That likely won't happen in the foreseeable future primarily because of the waste that we believe is in groundwater. It's going to continue to decompose and it's, we're not stopping the source. One alternative, and I don't know that the state looked at it, would be, you know, basically removing the waste, you know? And that could be selectively done. We've got pretty good maps on where the waste is. So I mean, you could almost, you know, develop a mining plan where you just remove it and haul it to a permitted facility and remove the source. So basically, you're removing the waste and putting it somewhere else. That probably would be, well, I wouldn't even venture to guess the cost of that, but it might be, it'd be worth an economic look. And at that point, then, you could actually clean up the site completely by just removing the waste itself.
So it's not likely that within the 10-year period set forth in this, that we would actually see closure?
No, I would think not. Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Gard.
In the list of leaking landfills that the state's come up with, is that a list of 10? Were 10 out of 11 or is there more? How many landfills are on that list?
You know, I, I'm sorry I don't remember the list, but I think the number is in the 50s. You know, there is something like 57 permitted landfills in the state. And I think the state considers the vast majority of them being impacting groundwater. Now, many of them, and why they kind of selected it down to this 11, group of 11, was beyond that. Groundwater might not be impacted or there may not be no receptors nearby, those kinds of things. So they've kind of relegated that to, you know, just a natural attenuation is likely the remediation for those facilities. So basically, you just monitor them forever. And the nature will basically clean up these sites over a long period of time, as long as there's no receptor groundwater well or municipal or anybody using water within that impact zone. So I don't know if that answers your question, but they consider most landfills in the state impacting, being impacted.
And you believe there's about 50 in this situation of leaking landfills?
Well, yeah, I believe the number is 40, or 57 permitted facilities. And I think the number is probably high 40s or close to 50 that have some kind of impact.
And so you're suggesting that it might be economically cheaper to remove the waste?
Well, that would have to be looked at. I'm just throwing that out as another, you know, to answer Jonathan's question is kind of a sure way to clean up the site would be to remove it.
Your map's gone, but what is the flow? How far is it, the flow travels from the original location?
What is that distance, Eric? The distance by which the vinyl chloride has left the site?
It's less than.
I hope you got to tag. That made me evidence.
I think I remember the scale on a map. It's, I don't know, less than 100 feet?
Yeah, it's not very far.
Yeah.
100 feet in 30 years? Didn't we primarily burn this location? We did not, we did not pack trash. We did not, Howard, didn't we burn most everything?
Say that again.
Did we, did we burn or did we bury trash?
I have your pointer. On the far, on the far east side where it wraps and comes up around over there, a lot of it we found was ashes. Pushed over, burned, pushed over, burned and stuff like that. And eventually, that's where they started with the trenches. But we did cover down the slopes also because we were finding a lot of burned and ashes and that kind of junk down there.
Yeah. So do you think the contamination is coming from the ash or is it coming from the buried garbage?
Oh, I think it's coming from all of it, probably. Probably coming from every bit of it, yeah. As I recall, the first times that I went down there, there was actually water in the bottom of the trenches. You could see water in there because it was on top of the bedrock or down in there, something like that. But there wasn't that kind of concern.
Can you speak into the microphone, Howard?
Sorry, sorry, Mayor. There was water in the bottom of the trenches occasionally down there. So really, we were working in wet feet, basically, with the bottom of the trenches. And that water continues to move through that stuff, moving east. And I'm sure it's from garbage and ash and everything. Although the original part right here is where all of that ash was. Because that was the convenience, and you probably remember this, you've lived here all your life. That was the slope where it was thrown over and burned and bulldozed over and stuff like that. So probably the oldest stuff and burned is all along that east boundary.
I don't remember us burying any trash here. Paul, did we bury?
No, we buried.
When did we quit? When did we quit burning?
And the first trenches that I have, that I worked with George, developed the original map right along this east side, right in this area, were dated 1971. I think that's, that's probably when they started the trash stuff. So several years before that was probably this throw it over the edge and burn it kind of thing. I don't think there was any real control. It was seriously a dump at that point in time. And of course, when you do burn it, you do get rid of some stuff and you concentrate the bad stuff. So water going through that picks it up.
If we do pump this product, if we pump the groundwater, can we treat it in our own waste system?
Probably.
And so all we would have to do is put in a collection down in front of that migration?
And take it over there.
And take it and pump it to the
Right.
To the waste station and treat it?
See, the, I believe they're still doing it, Ken would probably know. But from the Lander landfill where we trap, where we've had groundwater coming out the bottom for years, has all been trucked to your plant here and treated. And at Lander, they have their open ponds. Many years ago, when I worked with it, they had to stop taking it because it kills the bugs. It's a different kind of treatment process than what you have. So I'm sure this kind of stuff would probably just be collected and pumped over there.
That's the Five Lake region.
Pardon me?
That's the Five Lake region.
Yeah.
Well, from here, it can't be that costly to put in a ground collection. And we're awfully close to our facility. Can we get some data on that? Is that going to be, how many years are we going to, are we going to, what are, are we on the hook for just ever here? Is that what you're trying to tell us? Until that mediation quits moving?
Yeah, well, you've got, you've got the 10-year window that they'll help you, but then after that, it's yours.
We're back on the hook.
Yep.
So we really would be wise.
If I understand the law that way.
We really would be wise to get hard after it in that 10-year spectrum where we get some 75% help to try to stop its migration.
Yeah, there was some discussion during the drafting of the rules. What if, towards the end of the 10-year period, something else is discovered that wasn't, you know, discovered in that time period? And you're kind of back to square one. And in that case, the, there would be an allowance to kind of start the clock over. So it'd be a case by case. So you're not 10 years cold and hard, you're out of the, you know, you're done. But there is a, because there was some discussion, it's like, what if we do all these things? And then in 10 years, we find a new contaminant or something that we didn't anticipate?
With these government agencies, they don't know done. They just try to find something else and keep bleeding the pig. So I really, you know, that's a real problem because, you know, we can find contaminants that are naturally in the ground that are doing the same type of thing. And so, you know, there's no defending that. And I just think that, you know, we better do what we can do to stop the transfer of that fluid and why we have some help to do it. But I, you know, my speculation, it's amazing that this gets, today is 30 years and it's not closable. And so here we go again. And so, you know, in 30 years, there'll be another bunch of city councilmen up here scratching to figure out how to fund this thing again.
There's been a lot of recognition and a lot of change in just the last few years of this problem compared to where we started with our Citizens Advisory Group several years ago. I mean, we've got the attention. And when I was at the State Elected Officials Conference over in Lander here a couple of months ago, Governor Mead said it's one of his top three priorities. And Senator Bebault, who's on the appropriations, said it was one of their three top priorities too, to keep funding this and getting this stuff done. So from where we've been 10 years ago to where we are today has been a tremendous recognition that we have this problem to go fix it and put money into it. And I think that will continue. They just don't want to see us continue to operate landfills. They're going to be back into that kind of situation in the future. They want to clean this up now and not go back to that kind of thing. That's where they talk about centralizing landfills, lining landfills and doing stuff like that. They just don't want to let it get away from us again.
Well, the cost of that is just astronomical in my opinion. And I can't quite get my head around the fact that we're going to ship our garbage to Billings or we ship our garbage to Casper. You know, because, you know, we're just, we've written this stuff so tight that you can't dispose of anything. And where we're at right now, you can turn 360 degrees and see nothing. And it's been that way for 200 years. And yet, we're in a real problem with getting enough money to reclaim that someday. And that's like a yo-yo itself. Every few minutes, it's four years and it's 20 years and it's something else. You can hardly keep up with it. And it's sure difficult to deal with them. They don't seem to have a playbook like the rest of us.
When we initially started some of this, not too many years ago, there was 144 landfills in Wyoming.
How did you get it down to 57?
There are EPA rules and regulations that came along for closure and monitoring and everything else. They gave most of the small landfills an option to get out and to do some of this stuff, to get away from doing it. That's why we closed most of the small landfills in the county, the pavilions and the Missouri valleys.
How many was there on the reservation that you closed?
Pardon me?
I remember that there was quite a number on the reservation that was closed.
When the Solid Waste District was first formed in this county, that district went out and closed 120-some small dump sites, about half in the county and about half on the reservation. So we went from that to 10 landfills in the county and now we're down to three, I think, or four. So the trend has been that way and it will be down to one or two. South Dakota's got 12 or 13 landfills for the entire state.
I think the concern that Councilman Gard is talking about is certainly valid. It seems like you're always being jerked one way or the other.
Correct.
And, you know, the idea of having a collection pit in there and pumping the water out may be a valid one if it meets their
Right.
you know, guidelines and whatnot. And if they say, no, that won't work, then you can just forget it regardless, whether it's the most economical or not. And so that's, that's the game that we have to play, it seems like. And that's where, you know, the, all of the recycling that we're doing and all of the work that we're doing in various areas are helping on this pressure. And so I think it's certainly moving in the right direction, but it is exasperating sometimes. Is there anyone else that has any questions?
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Beggar.
So, do you have, are there any monitoring wells west of the landfill? Okay, and so because of that, we're able to isolate, we're able to say that the contaminations are not coming in from somewhere else? Yes, that's true. Okay.
Councilman, there is some contamination migrating out of the property from gradient.
I misspoke.
Eric?
We're seeing a little bit of. Councilman?
I can hear you. Councilman, there's a little bit of trichloral ethane in this well, right? I'm shut off. Boy. See my spot? Number five, monitoring well five up in the upper right-hand corner. You can see monitoring well, W1A is a proposed monitoring well to further determine what is coming onto the landfill from up gradient. But there's a little bit of, it's a solvent, so. Okay, so then, but are there any wells through the cap or any monitoring wells out across the cap itself? Or just around the edges? Mostly around the edges, but EPA, and I'm not familiar with what went on there, installed EPA 1, EPA 2 like 20 years ago. I see, okay. But we're not collecting data from those points anymore.
You are not collecting data?
No, EPA 1 has been destroyed and EPA 2 has been dry. So I mean, I guess we're collecting dry whole information why it's dry, I'm not sure.
So I was, I guess I was just, okay, so could you reiterate the cost of what you're looking at if you were to put in a, basically a sump, is that my understanding? And pump out of that?
A pump and treat system?
Yeah.
You know, we're going to have to look at costs, but one thing to keep in mind is what we're looking at here is what we're seeing today. The, the actual landfill is not that old. And the problem with pump and treat system is it's, you're just maintaining what's coming out of the landfill. As this landfill ages, I would expect more and more stuff to start coming out. And that's the problem with pump and treat, you're just collecting as it come, coming. So, you know, I think we really would want to take a hard look at, of removing the source altogether and, and seeing, you know, when you look at the whole total project cost, it may be better just to get rid of the stuff or.
Question I would have, after we go through the remediation process and do what you have to do, then will we be able to use that property in the future?
Yes.
Mayor. Your Honor, I was, isn't there another option of building some sort of wall that would go down to the bedrock to stop anything from going into the river? It seemed like at one point we were talking about a, yeah, I can't, there was some technical term for a.
A cutoff wall?
Yeah.
That's kind of like, it's on the same, I mean, it is what exactly what it describes, but the, the thing about it is, is you'll still have to pump and treat water with that, that system because it'd be like building a dam. You're going to have to control the water. That's, that's the downside. It probably would be less expensive in the short term to do, you know, hydraulic control and, and, and pump it to the wastewater treatment plant. But over the long haul, you know, it may not be, and that's an analysis that needs to be done.
Okay, Councilman Guard.
Can we move that if we dug it? Can we move it to the Riverton Sandra location or does it have to go to a different location?
My guess is it'll have to go to a land, a lined landfill.
So we'd be trucking it all the way to Casper or creating another facility somewhere that's lined. Well, that should be cheap.
That would be cheap, 150,000 acres. Are there any other questions of our?
You know, the, I mean, seriously, in all seriousness, not the whole area would have to be lined. You could, in theory, you could put a line, I mean, I'm not sure, we'd have to get, you know, go through the permitting process, but you could build it up and have a hill and have a small lined area. Wouldn't necessarily have to be the same size as this, you know, it's.
You'd line that.
The footprint, if, if you were going to do that, the foot could, could be a lot smaller than what we did because we've got a lot of open space down there. Probably only half of the real footprint down there has got garbage underneath it. So you could do something different and reconfigure it on site in order to.
Just make a landline feel right there.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Howard, how, how hard, what, what would it take to get numbers to know to move, to move it or to stabilize it in place compared to pumping it now? I believe if you pumped it, you're going to pump it forever, right?
Right. And I think what we would see happen here, you know, you need, you need to make the commitment you're going to do something, notify the state, do that, and then work with someone consultant in order to outline those options. We would have to have some work sessions, you know, to describe what the options would be with you. And then take those options and go do the cost benefit of those particular options to see which one would be, you would be best suited to pick. That, that would be a large part of the initial exercise in doing all of this. And once you do that, then you can go on. And of course, DEQ should be involved once, once we would identify those and talk about those. Economics doesn't affect what they think about it at all, but they need to know the options that you're looking at and, and maybe contribute to that thought process, be part of that process on what you could do for ideas and then go do the cost estimating. And that would be your decision then on, on what you would do. But that's, that's the whole first part of this exercise. And then you go do the design and permitting of whatever you're going to do.
If we made it look like the Tetons, would we get some tourist dollars?
You might. If we get enough snow, you could have a ski hill, I guess.
Good idea.
I, I don't think it would be that big and ugly looking down there. These are really wider trenches. And I mean, you can probably almost stand in the bottom of most of them. I can remember them and you, I'm sure you can too. They're, they're just not that big. I think Dawn and I at one time, what did we estimate? About 650,000 cubic yards, somewhere in that ballpark. I think we came up with what, what we thought actual garbage was. So, yeah, you could, you could, you could go in there and excavate and build a much smaller facility and rebury it. And when you do that, you put the liner down, you don't want to go too far down. You want to kind of go up in the air so you don't have to go too far below grade. It, it really wouldn't look that bad.
Well, you've only got 10 feet to bedrock.
Right.
So.
Yeah, so you stay above it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you for inviting us tonight.
Okay. Dawn, do you have any comments you'd like to make? Obviously this is something that you've been working on and thinking about for a long time, so.
And on your mayor, I think this is it, you know? Once the rules get finalized, we'll, I'll need to present to you and kind of find out which direction you guys want me to go.
Okay. Stephen, do you have anything? No?
No, it seems like that last option to me makes the most sense.
It certainly sounds better and better all the time, especially with the equipment that we have now to move large amounts of material. Why, I could see it being done in a fairly short period of time.
I mean, treating something for a long period of time doesn't seem like a very good option.
Yeah. It doesn't seem like something we should have to do with garbage, but here we are. Yes, Howard.
Mayor, if I could, I'd add one more thing. It, it, you, you might still have some groundwater cleanup to do after the fact, but at least you've hopefully stopped the problem and then it will trail off after that. So it, it, it won't just end right now and we would do that, but it could be mitigated considerably.
Yes. Okay.
Your Honor.
Yes, Councilman Fabian.
So just out of curiosity, I mean, when you go through this process, if some material was missed, I mean, is it likely to produce additional contamination and have to be revisited again? Or, or would it probably be a minute amount that wouldn't reach the, the level required for mitigation?
That would be my best guess. I mean, I would think you'd get most of it just by digging it up, but yeah. And, and, and one other, one other remedial option, and we really haven't discussed, is just monitoring it. I mean, you know, we're not seeing it go on that far, you know, that, but, you know, I think we're early on in the process here and, and who knows if we, if we monitor for 10, I was, was brought up before, if we monitored for 10 years and then there's no more money left, then, you know, we're left holding the, holding the whole amount. So that's the, one of the risks we might run.
Your Honor.
Yes.
That brings up my question. For the next step we need to take to somehow acquire maybe some of these funds, what's the timeframe that we're looking at for the data for whatever, so we can make those decisions?
Well, the, the rules have not been finalized. And once they are and then approved by the Environmental Quality Council, they'll, they'll be, there'll be a date at which they'll become effective. And I'm, what, what they're pressing for is to try to get it so some of these funds are being expended the last half of 2014. And that would be, people would be entering into their planning and, and investigating and, and sending these notices to the, the state. I, I failed to mention that the, the next thing would happen would be you'll actually enter into a written agreement with the state and it'll stipulate what you're going to be responsible for, what the state's responsible for, what their expectations are. And it's, it's all in the bill or in the, in the rules. So it's, it's, it's something you could read today as far as a draft and get a, get a sense of what, what we're talking about. But it will be a, a binding agreement. And then you'll launch into these, whatever the remedial direction. And what I'm hearing tonight is it might include maybe a little different, a little additional investigation, you know, maybe just a simple quantifying what we think the quantities are, looking at some of these cost estimates. That, that might be a first meeting with DEQ is to lay out three or four options that you'd like to consider. And we may take the, the stance that, you know, over a period of a, a couple month period, we'd be meeting with DEQ, generating this information with, with you involved and, and coming up with kind of consensus of what might be the best option. And, and it doesn't have to be the cheapest option in DEQ's eyes as well. If it makes more sense from an economical and long-term performance monitoring standpoint, you know, you can make the argument that spending today's dollars will save you future dollars. And, you know, they're estimating 20 year monitoring on a pump and treat. Well, it likely would be longer than that. So, 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 so not to put too much emphasis on what the state's done, this was purely just to get a, a number, get a handle. And it could be twice that, it could be less than that. But I think you go through this process and look at all these evaluate, evaluate all these options, maybe collect a little more information, all of which would be eligible under the program to get to the point where you've come up with a remedial method that works, get approval of that through the state and then build it. And then all those, and then monitoring it. And all those costs would be, you know, the state would be, through the agreement would be funding up to 75% of that. Does that help?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Your Honor.
Yes, Councilman Guard.
With, with the data that you've collected, do you have an idea of the volume of water that's flowing past those monitors? Is there any way to tell that?
I don't, Eric, I don't, I think we've got enough data that we could probably make some estimates.
So we would know how many gallons that we would be putting in our treatment plant if we went that direction?
Could probably estimate that, just, just on, I don't think we've done any tests of the aquifer, those kinds of things. You'd actually do pump tests and things to, to, to finally design a pump and treat system. You'd have to do a little testing to, to characterize the aquifer. But what we know about it would be enough to, to, to pick some typical values and, and at least do a cost estimate. And that's probably what the state based it on, but I'm not quite sure.
Are we talking thousands of gallons of static water or what do you think? Thousands? So we really would need to talk to the sewer plant and see if, if they could handle that kind of volume.
Yeah, and that, that would be part of this whole process of, of evaluating all the options before you implement it. That's a good point. I mean, if, if we find that we've got too large a quantity, the concentrations are such that they can't handle it, I mean, it's a possibility. I'm not sure, I'm not sure, you know, what, what the treatment plant would be capable.
That's something we would have to run by our plant operator.
And that would be involved with the, and if you can't dispose of it that way, then that.
Sure.
Alternative probably doesn't bear weight.
Your Honor, we're only running our plant about 50%, so we have quite a bit more capacity.
No, I, I think the capacity is there, but I think the type of chemicals that's coming into it and whatnot, why that's something that our plant operator would have to approve before we just say, well, this is what we're doing and here comes a thousand gallons of it, good luck. You know, we, so in the, the team that you had put together, I would thank Dawn to, to come up with these ideas. Dan would certainly be one that we would want to, want to involve in that as a possibility.
Correct, your right.
Your Honor.
Yes.
So if, if you were to dig this up, are we talking about, I, I see that line on the east side for the, I think that's the cap line or the, or the, yeah, that, that line right there goes halfway through the ball diamonds. Yeah. So are we talking about going back to that point? Or, or do we have to go back further because we've got the methane monitoring wells further to the west of that? That would, that are somehow contaminated by that?
By our original mapping in the trenches when they were finished over there in 83, that's how we defined that black line all the way around, that that's the limits of where the garbage are. And yes, there is garbage underneath those, those east ball fields and stuff in there. Yes, there is. And the, and all the, the water and stuff that's coming through, that's what helps generate the methane. Garbage is decomposing and methane's being generated.
Right. Watering the ball fields helps. Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, thank you very much for coming, gentlemen. We really appreciate it this evening. That helps us a lot.
You're welcome.
You bet. On another issue, not on the agenda, but we had a, a news release that came out regarding the Environmental Protection Agency. And that's caused a lot of heartburn in the city at this time. And I just wanted to take a moment and read the news release that Mr. Weaver and I put together and the chief regarding this issue so that you all have an understanding of what the, the status of the position that the city is taking on it. I personally have had numerous calls today. I've had three interviews personally, two telephone interviews and a number of telephone calls from people that are very concerned about the, that issue. And so we've felt that it would be best to, to come out with a, a news release. It says recently has been reported in the media that the Environmental Protection Agency released an opinion declaring the areas surrounding Riverton as Indian country. This has resulted in a number of calls to City Hall. It is the city's position that jurisdictional issues need to be resolved in court. To date, all court rulings have agreed that the city of Riverton is not on the Wind River Reservation and is not Indian country. There has been no legal change of status regarding criminal law or civil law in Riverton. Tax rates and collection methods remain the same. Court jurisdictions remain the same and police authority remains the same throughout Riverton. Future changes in legal status will only be recognized when issued by a legal court authority with the proper jurisdiction to rule on such matters. In sum, there have been no legal changes in Riverton with this ruling. And Stephen and I went over to the county commissioners and, and visited with them this afternoon. And there was four of our legislators that were there and they discussed it briefly as well. And their feeling basically is that the EPA ruling has to do strictly with Clean Air Act. And so when we're jumping to conclusion that it may have impacted our tax and may impact our jurisdiction and on and on, that is entirely not correct and is, just doesn't have validity at this time. So what the future brings, none of us know. But I wanted to, to, to take this opportunity to, to share that with the community and, and with the citizenry. So thank you. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the work session.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved in second discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.